We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 on Thursday evening. We'll start with our invocation, Mr. Powell, if you do as the honor. And if everybody will please be standing for the prayer.
Father, we are so grateful to just be here today. And Lord has been passed through an intersection with no traffic light in the middle of Logan deal with 78 and 20 coming together. Lord, there is frustration and we pray for those people around it. Lord, we are grateful that there is a place that once you get through the tangle and the rush, that you can find home in a peaceful place with some beautiful fields and kind people and less traffic, Lord. It is to be, we are to be grateful for that. Lord, we just ask you to watch over this community and keep it always to be a place of peace where you come home to it. And there's a cool comfort here, Lord, that's wonderful. Give leadership, your vision of how to do that. Watch over their meeting tonight as they protect and do things that are important for the community. Lord, for those who serve here as staff and employees, we just ask you to give them great wisdom to implement those things that would make this a place of peace. Lord, we're grateful for that tonight especially. Let me pray that prayer and Jesus again.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands one ambition under God and indivisible with liberty and innocence of God.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start with roll call and we have a little balance up tonight. Everybody in attendance? We're gonna go ahead and start with the agenda approval. Before we do so, I do need to add something under new business. And that's discussing maybe property under an ordinance of nuisance properties. We're gonna be talking about that. So that would be number three under new business. Nuisance property abatement for the city clerk. With that being said, is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of number three under new business nuisance property abatement. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, if you're doing one? It is unanimous? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Yes, okay.
I would like to minutes pulled and hear the corrected.
Minutes pulled. And so it's okay. Go ahead and since those accounting numbers.
And then I look in the one two. And can we minutes?
Is there anything else? Our financials say July to June than the ones we have for July and May. There was apparently something I learned tonight, a glitch because of the new crossover to the, but what we can do is we can remove them and I can look into it further and remove the financials if you would like to do that. You're what?
I'm okay with what's in here, it's just now it's reflected in.
If you look at the bottom of the financials. It says, full basis.
I'm okay.
Through 230th of 2025.
Okay.
As long as everybody is comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Sometimes we can play around with it. How the report is run. There it goes again. Okay. And so is there any other discussion? So is there a motion on approving the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes.
I can second. Is there any next, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. All right, we're gonna go on to committee reports with the DDA and Ms. Rachel Davis. We have nothing you want to report at this time here. Nothing, thank you. Our planning and zoning commission, our planning and zoning administrator is not here tonight. He did submit a planning and building report. Joe, would you like to go over that?
Come on. Just the person. Imagine me worrying up there. So cover the side plans under review, Mike's tire. That one we have received their, their initial, because I can't say the word. Plans and we have got feedback from your Veritas and they are working on correcting those now. We just got their second submitted today and off to your Veritas. Then. Let's just change there. Active land service permits, gas station is authorized to begin working yet. But patent shop, I haven't heard much about to this time. Just change there. Other active projects, our current, we're still in phase two upgrade and that's gonna be going well, as you all know. Not many issues coming from them from some residential complaints that's gone on there. But as far as the zoning administration, we have had too many concerns. That's all the new business details.
261 industrial park. Is that being ordered?
261 industrial parkways, when you take a right off of Park Street, it's on the left, they're gonna be experiencing their parking lot.
Oh.
It's next to where?
Next to us, yes.
We will ask the question regarding the tire show. I know we had like a six month on that.
We do. And do we need to extend that or we? We already have extended it and we've also put in the fire marshal. It is extended for the city for the middle of August, that was the extension date. And the fire marshal has given this extension until the end of August. They have fire hydrants in place, they are hustling along right now to get everything done as quickly as possible. And I think this is a new process for them, I mean, they go through everything, but they are working with us and doing everything as quickly as they can. But they are aware from the city, they've received a memo about those deadlines.
Is the deadline final in August or will it be extended again?
The fire marshal indicated to me that that would be the final, the end of August for them. We'll move on to the library report with Dana Seager.
Good day, everybody, tonight. I'm Barbie here.
Hi, Dana.
It's been a wonderful summer. And it's hard to believe that next time we meet, school will already be in session, which is fine.
It's smart.
Yes. We had Santa John come and do a special storytime this morning at the library. All of you know Santa John. So I'm excited to have two more events with him this year before he comes to do the tree lighting. We've given away over 100 books for summer reading program and that was just in the month of June. So it's been exciting. I think our patrons have read almost 800 books during the month of June. So I'm excited that everybody's been reading so much over the summertime and giving prizes. Tomorrow morning at 10:30, we have children's music and movement. And then on Monday, we have the Iraqi Homestead Zoo coming. So they bring inside animals and they give information about those animals. I booked them intentionally in July this year instead of in June because last year a lot of their babies weren't able to come in June, it was too soon to bring them. And so this year I'm hoping in July to have some really fun animals.
What's what time Monday?
Monday at 11:00 AM. Yes, thanks for asking that. 11:00 AM on Monday. And then the real outdoor petting zoo, the big one, will be September 27th, which is a Saturday. And we have a good turnout for that, even though I haven't done it for several years. So I'm expecting a pretty big crowd for that. April is our new team member that we hired. This is her second week of training and she's doing fabulous. So it's nice to have her there. And I also just wanted to mention that we have some free books that were donated to the, to the library. We have two carts right now that are free in our lobby. So anybody who's interested in free books, please come by the library and check those out. We also have a lot of wonderful books for sale. Most of our books are 50 cents, a quarter, 10 cents. So they're really good deal on books right now. And that's because of the generosity of our community and all the donations we've received. So actually I'm gonna refill, I didn't check the little free library, but I have a bunch of books in my trunk to refill that tonight as well. So anytime that little free library needs books, please don't hesitate to email me or call me and I'll be happy to bring some books down because we always have some that we can give away. I want to thank all of you for all of your support and I hope you had a good summer so far. I'm a little jealous of Savannah. But my daughter will be going to college not far from there this fall, so I'm sure I'll be there at some point. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you for having me. Wonderful summer.
I'm glad you came to some of our events. It was great to see you. Got a little busy, a little crowded at some of those, but yeah, but it was, it's been a fun summer. And other than some parking issues, I think everything has been extremely smooth. So hopefully we'll work that out. I keep reminding our patrons to park at the church, park at the church, park at the church, but they don't always listen to me. So I do apologize for any of the parking issues, but hopefully we'll get those resolved. And other than the big zoo, the city hall will be closed on that Saturday. So other than that petting zoo in the fall, I don't anticipate a big crowd like that again. Monday, we might have a decent crowd, but I don't think it'd be anything like the reptile show was. There was quite a crowd. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dana. At this point, we're gonna do a public comment. Anybody would like to say anything? They're willing to come up and say their name and their address, please. Anything else? Mr. Marmo, come up, please. Go ahead and repeat your name for us.
My name is Marmo, 18th Highway 138. I'm gonna see follow my process, I don't know if you know a lot of it. I had a business before when new administration came in stops because of the, what's, what's I'm doing is not compared with what's, what's in the licensing. So what I'm doing, I'm trying to follow the rules. He just gave me the application yesterday, so I can fill it up. And I think the taxidermy out of process, that was a big issue, that was the main thing. They turned it down. So hopefully I'm changing the, only just here processing. I have people calling me now, you open, a lot of your way, the yellow business, they burned down and the guy is not gonna open again. They can do something. All my saving, everything I'm putting in this, a new business, somebody's new here, the new administration, they approved it, everything okay. I follow the rules. Now I have to follow these rules right now, that's fine, but I hope I can start business on September. And here business is only three months, it's not a whole year or not, basically the weekend. So I'm looking for this suggest if I do that, hopefully everything will go through with this. So that you know, at least, probably for that if it's, you didn't have no complaint in three years from nobody, you didn't have no complaint from nobody, everybody is happy. So now when people is coming to me, I'll be, are you still in business? As long as I'm not, and so September we'll see what's going on. And so, and I hope you won't be handling and try to follow the rules, that's all it is. That's all. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And to be clear on something, Mr. Marmo.
Yes.
You did come in and meet with our city administrator.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And he shared with you the process to go through.
Yes, it's one thing.
And it's your understanding that we don't make decisions based on personal preferences, we make rule, we make decisions based on following the rules or within the parameters of the rules. So if one is within those rules, we can't say no, okay? So I want you to realize that. This is not.
I'm not saying it as personal, you know, I invited you before I know you are making it, honestly. I talked to her before I knew to the man.
But I'm glad you came in. So that's, yeah, Mr. George.
I've been giving the process, so I can go with this.
Great.
So I'm up to him, you, whatever, but your inside. So that's all.
Well, great. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to say anything?
My name's John Nowell, 74 Forester Cemetery. And I was here last month talking about some problems we were having with the Congress. Well, there's been some improvements, there's been still a few things that continue to go on. And we met with Scott Simpson with IHC yesterday, Saturday. And while we were sitting there waiting on him, there was a semi truck that came in and all that forced me to move from where I was because he was coming in on the road and he told me. And I said, oh, you can't make. And he proceeded to go on and he got through without any problem. The, Mr. Simpson showed up and while we were sitting there talking with him and several of the other residents that were around, around the area that are affected there, the truck came back. The truck came back out and attempted to make the turn on the Forester Cemetery. He had to swing all the way over to the right and avoid the culvert, falling off in the culvert on the right side. He cleared that, went all the way across the road, ran onto the person's across the street's property to make the turn. And then in the process of leaving, he almost turned to the point of almost flipping because his wheel dipped down into the culvert. Now, I addressed the issue last month about culverts not wide enough. And Mr. Simpson agreed after seeing who he witnessed as well. So I don't know if the city needs to take care of that as part of their business to make the, make the culvert correct or if that needs to be included. He said he could do it, but there's that fine line is, you know, it was already a problem in full. And it's wanting to address that. And secondly, in the process of clearing, there's a little field there that's in the northeast corner of the city property. And it had been blocked off of seeing any of the older spray field by the woods. Well, now all the woods are gone and it's an open view and it's probably about 150 to 100 feet. And it was by understanding and talking with this, with the general that it would be, it would not be visible. And we're a little bit concerned about that aspect as well as the drainage area from that area coming down and ultimately ended up in the Johnson's pond and ultimately in the other Johnson's pond. We'd like to see those kind of things, those two things particularly addressed. And I think he satisfied our other, you know, questions in talking with the mayor. So just a heads up about that culvert because it's not gonna go with.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Anybody else? We're gonna go ahead and move on and Joe, why don't you go up there?
So we'll move on to the business. The first line is, we vote for the extension, it was a continuing product. Quick rundown of anything that's changed. So the only thing that changed since our work session was there's a grant for anybody who has an active land service. And then, what was in that spares, we don't want to stop any of our work, it's already the flu, let's be counsel. And we felt we need to add that.
Where's that at?
It's on the very last line of.
Can I request something? The way we get rid of something on, on ordinance or whatever, which changes, we front it out? And when we add something, we add it in red?
Definitely.
Is that a possibility?
Yeah. Definitely makes the lobby sort of tell.
For us to see exactly what the change was, that's great. Thank you. So nothing was removed, just?
Nothing was removed.
From what I could tell. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, as I said in my comments, my concerns from the town hall portion of the meeting.
I think this is just the moratorium right now.
Oh, that, I'm sorry. That's the thing. Or it's just, that's okay.
Do we have any other comments or questions? With that being said, I'm going to ask, there is a motion on the extension to the resolution of 25, 2025, close port. So. If you would say the motion involved, it's gonna have to be the clerk who write it down, we need to make sure the minutes reflect that.
I make a motion to accept the resolution 2025-04 to extend the moratorium. Reserving or building for it for property located in the downtown overlay district.
Is there a second?
I have a second, Beth.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please, if you're doing one? Davis? You? Moving on to the next one?
So next was the public comment amendment. Most of it is still relatively the same, what we did today, all the feedback and consideration. And so the first one you'll notice is at the very last line, a public comment in town hall. A public comment will be a lot in over in 30 minutes or when each citizen who wishes to speak is spoken, which are assumed and same for town hall. That way we do put a cap on full nights of common alone. Town hall has been corrected to three minutes, just like a public comment. Like I pointed out in the work session, that can be overruled by a vote from the jury council. Most of the major changes, sensible decision.
Are we gonna leave that 48 hours advance notice in there? Because I agree with Maxine on her comments and that.
And for my comments were basically that I felt having for, for the town hall portion, having to give notice 48 hours in advance. In my mind, town hall can involve things we've discussed tonight that somebody wants to make a comment on. And that means then they have to wait until the next meeting when town hall is available.
Then remember have to reserve 48 hours before the next meeting.
So I don't think it's necessary to reserve, I mean, down the road if we run into problems because we have too many comments and too much, why not? And of course that could be.
I think by limiting it to 30 minutes, time kind of eliminates the need for 48 hour advance notice, but especially for town hall, town halls just be much less formal and more about a big change of conversation, a actual public comment. I think we should go with that too.
I don't want to feel like we're restricting the citizens so much that they're not gonna wanna come say anything. And I want to hear what they have to say and I may be offended by it sometimes, but that's normal.
But for public, but for public comment, I'm not sure, I don't disagree.
I'm on the same page on the public comment and I agree with the 48 hour home hall. Encourage people to come and be freely. We may not have an answer for them because we're not identified, not what they're talking about. So that's helpful for the 48 hours as council knows, hey, you're bringing this issue to us, so maybe we'll have answers for you versus, you know.
I don't believe in the public comment, there is a 48 hour.
Start looking for it.
I think, I think that is more, that 48, we're finding it's more appropriate for public comment.
Right.
It's not on here, but it does address that issue saying that must be limited to the agenda items for the meeting that they're giving public comments here at this time. So.
What?
I don't know.
In order to maybe, I can't say the word, make things a bit more efficient, perhaps with 48 hour close and don't even have to answer this, we could do something that to the effect of 48 hour notice will take precedent for making comments in the essence of time over someone that didn't give advance notice.
I have this procedure of standpoint.
How do y'all feel about that?
I agree.
Well, they might feel strongly enough to make a 48 hour reservation. They certainly should be able to speak first.
Right.
Reservation. You know, the way to trying. I gotta decide as a party and I won't speak.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So what I'm hearing from you guys is if you have the opportunity, people have the option of doing 48 hour advance for public comment and they will be giving preference over somebody who has not given 48 hours if there is not enough time left for everybody to speak.
Right.
And that's in the public, in the public comment. And then in the town hall, you do not require, want to have the 48 hour notice, they should just be able to speak and it'd be a 30 minute.
Do we still have them sign in the paper when they want to speak, other comment?
They, they sign in when they come in.
Okay.
That's it. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody? Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
With that being said, if somebody succinctly put that into a motion, come kind.
Sure.
And be prepared to receive it so that our city clerk can get it down. I'll make a motion there, okay? And make a motion that we accept ordinance number 25, 2025-02 and ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-1, parliamentary procedure of meetings, I'm gonna put that in paragraph with the changes to the bottom of page one, paragraph number one, public comment to include a provision for 48 hour in advance notice to the city clerk, submitting their name, address and topic of discussion. And then they will be recognized by the mayor before it goes in council. And they will be given preference over others who wish to make public comment who did not give 48 hour notice. And to change paragraph three, town hall, to exclude the statement, any individual wishing to speak, must submit their name, address and topic of the city clerk 48 hours in advance and be recognized by the mayor before addressing the city council. You want me to repeat it? I'm gonna watch the video.
Did you say?
I. I can say it on the. Do we have a second?
Not second.
There's any other discussion? All those in favor? Two hands. Great.
The next slide was the award of Walnut Road City Ball to the same repair project. Do apologize for being spot on. I think there was not very things.
Evidence, okay, I'll be off on.
Or any.
Sure. So we had four proposals. There was the B one to be forwarded patches. And you have the four proposal from each vendor. On this chart, the way we evaluate was by each vendor, their timeliness, so the proposal being received on time, completeness, all required components of an RFP are addressed. And level of professionalism, this kind of had a budding effect with completeness. So every document is fully accurately addressed. So you can see the most issues that happened in this RFP were this level of professionalism. We did have a couple of proposals that were missing some items. Every one of them did kind of attempt to, but missed the E-verify forms. So what we're going to have to do, whoever is with us, have to sign a affidavit. And they got to show us that they are utilizing E-verify, but they can actually start. So company information, experience with similar projects, all vendors do have references and experiences with similar greater projects. Evidence of swapping backers, there was none that we could find. Overall project estimate cost, you will see they're ranked in order there. Lowest cost received with the lowest number of points, as you go through the RFPs, there are always some significant differences in pricing. Then down at the bottom, I did add each missing piece from each vendor.
I wanted to reiterate that you said the lowest number of points with the lowest cost. I believe it's the highest number of points with the lowest cost.
Correct.
So the five that vendor four got would have been the lowest.
Correct.
Okay.
That vendor four is looking for top choice, yes.
Were they sent to us, or did I just miss something?
No, you did not have these in advance.
Okay.
You know, that is them, bringing to me as per chief. Would be. And we're anticipating voting on this tonight? Yes, we are.
So you're saying the cheapest vendor was also the one that was the most compliant? It was received on time, they were the most professional, and all required components of the RFP are addressed.
Except for the E-verify, which none of them. So that would be, have to be a condition of, was informed with any of these, with these E-вер. Those were required to do that.
Right.
Now, would you tell us the difference in prices?
Difference in prices. So we've been on one, came in at thirty nine thousand nine hundred and five, twenty five cents. Vendor two, bring in at twenty nine thousand. Twenty nine thousand. Vendor three came in at twenty nine thousand five hundred. And vendor four came in at seventeen thousand six hundred.
And what was vendor one's?
Vendor one was thirty nine thousand, that's right. Nine hundred and five hundred and fifty five cents.
And in the work, were they saying that they are completing?
I do not recall. Did the RFP include that they're providing paint supply?
The ordinary reserve wasn't actually colored. And we did get that question and put it out to everyone with intention, it's sort of the exact same color for us, close to the same shade.
And did they all come and on site and look at the job?
Yes, so we did have a non-managing pre-bid meeting. In the very first page, instructions to the proposers, there's those on them to kind of look at the site. And all of these vendors did come.
Did we have one vendor that this got?
We did.
How many?
We had total of six vendors come.
Were there any questions from any of the vendors?
We did have some questions. Most of them had to do with our understanding of how construction works. So things of the nature of, do we understand the chain orders? Do we understand that some will have had their budget? Do we understand the quality of work matters, things of that nature? As far as the pieces of RFP that are material differences, we were asked about window panes, because that is in our RFP to correct one window pane. I did re-inspect the area where we do need the correction. And I did put out to them that there are three panes, eight by eleven window panes in those rooms. Two of them, two of those, two of those three panes. And then the only other material question was the color of the paint. The other biggest question was finalized, was there anything we want to correct it? And I did explain to that contractor that we cannot provide that, it's five days, RFP, it's not bidding process. We wanted proposals for the work to be done, because we don't have an RFP set or a contracted person to be a man to work with.
Do any of them have warranty on their work?
They all, if it's not in the RFP, it's a lot more verbal. The only one that I saw in the RFP was also vendor four, I think it was a five year. Which in RFP, we did say that had to be that minimal two years. Those documents, they would have to sign after.
I think they clear choices under four, yes, I agree.
Tony, is there anything that we missed that we need to cover here?
Not one thing. Council's well presented.
Are there any other questions by council?
Well, I would like to say since we didn't get it till tonight, that we might want to table it and actually look through it, or have a chance to look through it, and vote, and have a vote in the next council meeting.
One of the wonderful things about having a city administrator on board is that they do vetting for us. Oftentimes, just like Joe Walter does for us, when we're vetting different companies coming in, we're doing the base to expansion, or any other kind of engineering project that's going on. That's the process that we've put in place, and why we've brought on Joe as a city administrator to be able to do that for us. And it is, it is always been our best interest, I believe, in saving time to believe what our city administrator has put forward.
This makes your team pretty comprehensive and explained his thought process and how they meant to RFP, which we've had access to since it was in such a conceptualized. So I don't, I don't feel uncomfortable at all voting on this.
And I believe that our city administrator is for the best interest of the city if and because his job depends on it. I hate people on my team.
True.
So with that in being said, and of course, we can always do whatever council decides. But I'm going to ask if there is a motion tonight about the awarding of Walnut Road City Ball exterior meeting repair project.
I'm going to make the motion that we table it to the next council meeting. They have a chance to look, even though I trust you with my life, I prefer to read through it even.
Is there a second on that motion? Is there?
That does for lack of a second.
That is for lack of a second. Is there another, is there a motion on the?
I make a motion. Make a motion to award the Walnut Grove City Hall exterior painting and repair project to vendor four. Who had the lowest price and who was the most professional and has the entire job in their.
Next vendor four.
Vendor four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I will make a comment. I don't, in general, disagree with Linda's theory of being able to have something in advance. Because this particular project is one that we've looked at several times since we first started talking about doing this job. And we did request the RFP in advance, so we can review that. As long as we're meeting the RFP requirements with all of these bids, I don't see that voting on that tonight in this fitting of issue is of concern.
We have a first and a second. With all those in favor of approving, please raise your hand. We have three council members, Davis, Erica, Miles, Miss McLean, and those who are guests.
Will miss the best note.
And they'll come in who's against it. Time to new business, Mr. Morris.
So first, I would make this discussion, I'll take a placement counter. I do apologize for this one being brand new. The issue that is this getting information from our contacted super services, what was actually passed from the consultant that would be mowing our workforce. And getting that out today was, felt was important due to the fact that, I think, the AP looks like now it's probably about my shoulder height. So we wanted to make sure we got this out today to be able to discuss it. It is nearly the exact same contract we had with our prior vendor. So four considerations is the hay, so it's not that we will have to pay our vendor, they do bring in all the equipment, they go ahead of field themselves, and they will bring it out themselves as well. So the only changes in there was they will seed it with rye in the winter. And after consulting Chris, that was actually beneficial to the city, to be able to seed that with rye in the house with some nutrients. Further, then we use resin or pasture pro for weed control. And for the consultant Chris, as long as they don't use roundup, then it'll be okay. I guess this is not killing the hay itself. And then further, they must conduct nitrogen analysis on the hay after each cut, that protects the city and Diamond P Cow Company, who's proposing to come cut our hay for us. That way, if the nitrogen is too high, it doesn't affect their cattle, if they use it.
And those are the only changes.
And those are the only changes compared to the last.
And the vendor we had last year has moved out of the area, and that's why we look.
Our previous vendor moved to each segment.
So this vendor is doing it for the hay or something?
No.
No, no, no. Only consideration is the hay, they will take it. We did find this vendor through our last vendor, not from a referral, but we would cut their hay for them too, so. By being much with, no one cut their hay, they just send it to my equipment, they want to make sure that equipment doesn't sit, and they figure this is.
What is his name?
The vendor of the company.
The vendor.
The company is Diamond P Cow Company out of Source Simple.
Okay.
And the vendor is Chris.
Here.
Peters, Chris Peters.
I have some of the board's manager method.
Yes, they came in for about an hour long meeting. Public service manager program did have a sit down with me, myself, and three personnel from Diamond P Cow Company. He was very confident in their abilities to do this. He also took them out to the site, showed them all the spray heads. And we did let them know that they would be liable if they did hit a spray.
Really, sure.
They weren't. And I'll have that documented.
And you just said he has some equipment, too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The change in the type of grass and the type of chemicals, whatever being used, that all complies with whatever's necessary for the sewage plant.
Correct, so the type of chemicals used are actually a less damaging herbicide. That's why the proposal passes cows will be able to eat that. And then Chris basically told us, as long as it isn't the U.P. that will produce enough runoff, that will affect creeks, then it's in compliance with the law. Further, the seeding, actually also, that went off with the rye.
I just remember when it initially went in, there was a whole lot of discussion about the type of grass, you know, that they've used. As long as we're in compliance, I'm good.
And this is being brought forth for discussion and for your comments, but this is an administrative decision that Joe is going to make, just like it was with the last one, I believe. Is that okay with, or do we need to do a contract and approval?
I think you do it if there's no value in notices and this. I think ultimately Joe might want to do a contract that he actually settles off on.
Yeah, that'd be a contract, but this is not something council needs to vote on, this is an administrative action. But if he wanted to bring to everybody to let you guys know what was going on with that, and that's a new company. I'm glad you brought it to our public works, thank you.
I would, because of, let's see how life raises, because of a situation quite some time ago, where there was concern about somebody cutting the hay and receiving the hay in lieu of pays, I would like more or less a consensus from council that they're okay with that. Just so that we're kind of covering our bases and that we don't have ugly heads for our eyes again. In the past, we had a contractor that we had similar agreement that was administratively that. And there was just, let's just say, there was a whole lot of ugliness that got involved with that. And I would rather feel like council has more or less given their approval for you to handle this. And that just kind of protects him.
I will say, considering what it costs us a lot more than just the hay, if you're outside and out here to cut it, it'd be a lot more difficult.
Did you find this person, see the day come to you?
They came to me, mostly because of the issue with.
Yeah.
Having that equipment, they don't have a mincemeat land to use it. They just want their shoes.
Well, it's a, um, a vote, it's not really a vote, but let's have a vote against for all of you who are in favor of moving forward and have no exception to this process. All right. Thank you. All right, the next one is military discussion. And I will go ahead and take over for that, Joe, if you're okay with that.
So we got the information from our county office regarding our military real back and property taxes and complications and everything. As you all remember, perhaps, I'll bring it back to your memory. We said that we would only need to bring in three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars this year in property taxes, which is less than we have brought in or asked for or taxed in the past two years. And that was because, one, we were putting the garbage collection back on the community. And two, because of the work we've done in auditing different accounts and being conservative in our spending, we're able to do this. It looks like we are estimating that the net job just will be approximately eighty one million dollars for the city of Walnut Grove. And right now, our current rate for this past fiscal year was four point eight three one. It was suggested that if we were to just roll back, we would bring it to four point eight one three. But with being able to get the budget as low as we did this year, we're going to be able to go ahead and put the rate at four point one, which is pretty significant. Which is pretty significant for a city. We understand that putting the garbage back on the citizens is going to be. An adjustment, it's only going to be for six months of this fiscal year. From July 1 through the end of December, the city will cover the cost of garbage. And then starting January 1, the citizens will take it back upon themselves. There's one other city near us that's also doing this, much larger cities now though. And then if you look anywhere else and try to find any other city that pays for the garbage collection for their citizens, you will not find it anywhere. We aren't keeping in mind the cost per citizen. We will be keeping it to a minimum. Joe and I met with the owner of Southern Sanitation. We will be making it an exclusive contract with the city, which will help keep the cost down because there will be no competition. But being able to put that military at 4.1 is something we're all very proud of. And a lot of other cities are doing rollbacks or increasing their rates. I think us in the school board will be the only ones bringing it a little bit lower. So the process is this, and I have shared with each of the council members what the state mandates that under Georgia law. Since we are lowering, we're not just rolling it back, we're lowering the tax rate. The only thing we're required to do is hold a public meeting that is convenient for the citizens. That meeting will be held on Thursday, July 24 at 6:00 PM. It will be a call meeting, it will be very brief meeting. It'll be at that meeting that we vote. In the Wednesday prior to that meeting, one week previous, we will have the advertisement in the newspaper. Showing the tax levy history for the past five years, which is what we're also required to do. We will also have that on our website, another requirement that we're required to do. And that's all we're required to do. We are not required to hold any public hearings or anything else because we are lowering the taxes. Are there any questions? Or any comments? I wanted to share with you all the process. We were all contacted today by our deputy clerk to make sure you were all available to be at that meeting, to be able to hold the vote. Our other city attorney has also said he would be able to be here. We will advertise that in the paper about a call, we'll advertise to the paper about a call hearing for their reverting. And we will advertise it on the boards as we're required to do also, well in advance of the meeting. Are there any other questions?
In. This is.
I'm excited about it. I'm very excited about it. The fact that we can lower it. With a lot of other things going on in this world. We've worked very hard to be very conservative in our spending. And. Yeah, it's just, I think it's a very good move and I think Maxine was hugely said that, you know, a lot of adjustments are being made all over this world. Where things are getting re-regulated.
Right.
And by bringing it down.
In our city, we've got coming up the bill on the November ballot. That is being presented in a manner that to me is not. Accurate, and I think I'm okay to say this here, but as to what will actually be. But we don't as council know how that vote's going to go. And that unfortunately can affect where we have taxes. So to me, being able to lower the tax even in light of that. And what it could do to us later on, at least we're bringing our tax base down for our citizens. So that if later that bill creates a situation where taxes have to raise. Then we've at least started them in a lower base, which I think is a benefit to our citizens.
Thank you, honey. Thank you, honey. So that is what's going to happen with this. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page, everybody knew what was happening. So that we could move forward with this. I've already made sure the county office is aware because there is a deadline of getting the information to them by August 1st. And we will be a week in advance of getting that back to them. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments on this? All right. Great.
Thank you, Eric.
So with that, we're going to go on to the nuisance property abatement. And Mr. Powell, I'm going to ask you to come up here. We have a situation in our city where we have tried for years to. Work with the citizen and there's other situations that may arise in the future that we need to do this. Ordinance, we have an ordinance in place. But I would just like your thoughts and recommendations to council of what they do think we can do to move forward with this.
This is, and this section is a great tool. It's one of many, first usually thing usually used is a citation. And but there are certain circumstances where citations just don't work. And one of those is when you have a very difficult time finding the property under a foreclosure. Where the mortgage company has not put their name on record after a foreclosure. It's just, it just gets worse and worse. And so the legislature adopted the nuisance provisions into state law. So we didn't just create this ourselves, actually legislature created the process. It goes to your municipal court. Has the same kind of steps where you have to give them notice, have a court hearing, give them an opportunity to abate the nuisance. And if they choose not to do that, what its teeth is, is that you actually can go onto their property and abate the nuisance. With the city actually doing that or a contractor actually doing it. Really useful in dilapidating buildings or dilapidated outbuildings of a lot of cars that are really junk carting a lot are operable. It's really effective in getting areas where people don't cut their grass. And it becomes very less expensive, but the city can go in and get permission to cut their grass for them if they're just refusing to do that. So lots of, lots of ways this tool can be used. The good news is that once the work is completed, the cost to the city is then attached to the land as a lien. That's the equivalent of a tax lien. And so eventually that property can be sold to pay the city back if that's necessary. Or at the point where the property transfers, it becomes an obligation and we pay it accordingly. So it's, it's a very useful tool in certain circumstances.
Does the property default to the city?
It can, it just gets sold like taxes. So if nobody bids on it, the city could bid on it. And then, and frankly, it's been used where you have homeowner associations that no longer want to use the land that was set aside for a recreation area. It's really a very good tool to go in and clean up those areas. The city warrants while they tore down one of these dilapidated recreation facility. Taxed the lane, foreclosed the lane, and then renovated that as a pocket park. So it has those kind of elements, that's not what it's really designed for, but it's a tool to know about in those circumstances too.
And this tool is to be used in extreme cases, not just for somebody who hasn't cut their lawn for three weeks. This is extreme cases where the situation has been going on, and in this case it's been going on for more than eight years.
The regular thing about the use of this tool is it's a court. It takes a little while to establish it. So this process can be expensive. You don't really want to use it in a three week.
Yeah.
Cut because it's just so expensive to go through the process and tax the lanes and do those things. And so it's really one of those that's sort of the circumstances that y'all are looking at. It can be initiated by citizens. You know, you get, you get a complaint from a citizen that goes to the zoning administrator. Or it can be initiated by the zoning administrator or the agency authority of the city, the downtown development authority or the mayor council can initiate this.
At this point, it would be prudent to have council either vote in favor of or against.
And the vote is to initiate as to a certain piece of property. You vote to initiate a nuisance action and that starts the process.
Do you have the address for that property? Can you share with council some of those pictures, please? I don't think it's necessary, but just to refresh their memory.
And what we're doing is just would be instituting the law for this specific property.
These are pictures, these are recent pictures. These are recent pictures out of the state. They're from enforcement office. You all recognize what we're doing? Is everybody looking at them?
Public authorities. Can you see the. Black change to these pictures?
Just that. As I stated previously, citations have been issued. My effort, many efforts have been made towards with this.
And I know that a lot of effort has been in contact to be on, because I think I've been a part of that call and assault. And someone who's present. And go out right then, I knew you'd hold it in on weekends or in particular.
Nice question.
Yeah, of course.
The city's involvement and the work to be completed. Would that be the haul of vehicles and trash around the operating on the exterior?
I really think it would come down to what the judge orders.
It will be the evidence that you just saw and anything that some administrator wants to manage that. Would be presented to the court, the court would make the decision of what the order says as far as the.
There are some situations on here where I've questioned the. Health. And if there's a question where someone where protective covering and whatnot needs to be. We would never put our employees in that situation and outside company who is. Qualified handles that type of situation would be brought in to take care of that.
Would our employees be responsible for cleaning it up?
No, that's what I just said, yeah, no, that's what I just, in a situation where it's not healthy for our employees, no. In cutting grass, that might be part of it. We'll go ahead and wait until see, to see what the judge says, what he orders. He would, he may have suggestions on outside companies or we'd prefer an outside company doing it. If it endangers or there's a question about the health of our employees, then absolutely not.
So then put the inside of the house?
We'll wait and see what the judge says. There may be further. A further need to investigate further. So we'll wait and see what the report says on that, but we're just starting the process now. To see where we can get.
Who does the court on it? Apparently the homeowner's not going to go.
Our city attorney will go.
Yeah, it'll be up to the homeowner whether they want to send someone in their defense or not.
If he wants to, yeah.
So we are just voting on getting the process started.
Yes, we are. But that being said, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve a nuisance ordinance provision for the specific property.
Can we decontaminate?
Is it? The nature of the nature is.
And I said 940. I'm ready. The one stopped. The nuisance abatement.
Yeah, the nuisance abatement for property located at 949 Highway 81 South. Where we go on the 30052.
Another second.
I'll stop you.
Any other version of this question? All in favor of reading you? Name this. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to reports.
First report we had was public reports. Playing a lot of ketchup from the rain that we had last month. Right now we're going to do a grass and a ride waves in order. So a lot of their time has been spent in that. As you see in the report, we did the account company, we can probably discuss. They had to repair the maintenance court net, some humps in there. A part tool seat is stolen, so they had to replace that.
What's that?
Part tool.
Like the whole of course.
The actual seat.
The whole base?
Yes, the. Just a little bit in the seat. I'd be much more impressed with it. They did have two models on parking. They're giving the sewer plan, the water level lower than normal. As they commit to that. That has to be down to complete the spray. The American flags are above by our team. As you notice, they're one and as far down as you normally holes. Recent bad ones, we do have some channels broken ones that are air replaced. And we'll tell them if they have two American flags, we can get absolutely signed up. We did get the public works to take care of the city hall as a matter of course.
Okay. You city clerk before?
I am. Good help, a lot of rain and rain, but. We still had 26 runnels for the ball field. We have two runnels for the pavilion and as far as citations go, Long County had two. And George Seitz rolled out zero. Two total citations to the city of Long Island Grove between the chair and the gallery and the B S P.
Wow.
Only two. And as far as bank accounts go, general operating account, $570,804. $804.36. Sewer service is $5,312.31. The loss account for 2019 is $948,125.76. The money market account, $1,321,285.28. The DDA account, $9,111.91. And the sewer expansion is $533,827.15. The L A S sewer planet expansion project is $206,143.33. And then the spa's for 2025 was $99,509.26.
Some of you may notice that the sewer plant expansion stages account has come down to $900,000. We made our first payment today for the sewer plant expansion. Hey, guys. Seven points, man?
Good enforcement doesn't usually send a formal report, but we do talk every single day. As you know, the biggest piece, the nuisance property, that has been dealing with since it's hired here and previous code officer and the pod for that. So that's our biggest issue right now. We did have another property overcome. We spoke like her. We've got another property she owns in the city that is appearing towards that way of a nuisance property, mostly due to trash, grass, and they are renovating the inside and kind of just go on tight outside and staying there. Rubber in, this is over a month's long, so many notices. We did write a recitation and she wanted to appear. So we are trying to correct that one as well. We thought we would, you know, try and give her advice, whatever we can do, try to get her through that process. Other than that, we've got a lot of compliance as far as grass goes, invasion because of current laws, but a lot of more compliance regarding grass. And we're still working through the process of getting more compliance via maintenance as we discussed in our work settlement in previous council meetings regarding fences and new maintenance, where they may just need to be insured on the sizes.
Do we have any complaints for the habitual offender? Not so much the extreme, but one set of persons. They go months without cutting their grass, they wait till the last day, cut it before they're gonna have to go to the floor and they cut it.
Well, there is sometimes, sometimes the process within that sphere that hustles it is, I don't know sometimes, through the fact that they have to go through the notice cycle and citation, so sometimes it just doesn't appear that way. Currently, I don't think there is anything that we can do there. A lot of it comes down to the judge as they see them over and over again. For instance, if he sees them three times after citations and he says, "Oh, I just cut my grass." All that would be.
Yeah, I think we're counseling the eventual offender more. They get it right before they go to court.
Is there any thought of after a citizen doesn't cut their yard for two times, they go through the process, then they cut it three, four, five, as long as it's covered, they don't have to come to court? Is there any thought with the code enforcement department about once it happens the third time, just automatic citation?
We have discussed that. We have sort of debated a little bit as far as some of the nuisance problems and see how our services have to be delivered, a lesson we can look into and I'll get into for the next one.
Okay. Thank you. From our report, thank you, Joe and Lynn, as always, for all of your hard work. I seem to be out of the office just a little bit more than I have been in the past, but I think there's still so much work to be done that I find myself up there quite a bit anyway. Maybe it's because I enjoy the atmosphere and I enjoy the work as people that are up there. There's still a lot going on. There's going to be some major meetings coming up about land use, ordinances and whatnot. They will be public meetings. They will be discussions that council will be asked to participate in during this next six-month period. We have got to get this settled and nailed down and bring in any GRC to help us with the land use map and some other things and move forward with this master plan to have an idea of where this city is going so that when the mortuary lifts, we know exactly where we are. So be prepared, there's going to be a lot of work in the next few months. Hopefully, we'll get them all taken care of before January, when we can move on with a really great plan and things in place to handle those different situations that pop up. So just giving you all a heads up, be prepared. Lots of stuff happening. And really, that's it for me. It's always nice to see people coming up to the office. Mr. Mamu, you're a regular at our office and it's great. But we have a lot of people, a lot of people popping in and just saying hello and new business is coming. We have a flooring company coming into the city. We've got a Mexican restaurant that's interested in coming in. Lots of interest, people who want to come here. So it's great to look around and see. It always seems like there's just so much more to do, but we need to take the time to look back and see what already has been accomplished and what has been done. And I think we're doing a great job and I'm looking forward to the next two and a half years and see what else we can get done. And that's really it for me tonight. So I raise to town hall. Is there anybody who has anything else they want to add? Anybody? Of course. You don't even have to come up here anymore. All right, come on.
We're still live anyway. David Johnson, 876 Forest and Cemetery Road. I was just gonna make a comment about the hayfield, the new business. And again, we were talking about with the expansion of the spray field, the runoff going into a portion of the property or the pond that I own and downstream to the gods. At least we already understand that's an ongoing issue. But with the contractor coming in with their own equipment, maybe that's another thing we can address as far as that expansion of the apron going up to the sewer, the water treatment, because I imagine he'll be bringing his equipment in on a trailer and that roadway is just not designed currently for that kind of equipment coming in and out. So we've seen it with the equipment that needed to get in for the expansion project. I was just trying to address this before it turns into another issue. Thank you.
I want to make one comment. When we met, both Joe Morris and I met with the contractor who's at IHC, who's out there. We talked about a lot of these different issues. We did take you guys seriously. We took Mr. Dahl very seriously. And while we know that there are some things associated with contractors when they come in, there are some things that can be handled immediately and some things that we were concerned about when they leave, was it going to be in the same condition or better? Because I leave, when you come into a situation, you leave it in the same or better condition than when you arrived. And when we spoke to the contractor, we shared that with him and he assured us that when he leaves, he will leave it in better condition than when he found it. And quite honestly, I was very clear with him, that means that that road is almost like a beautifully new paved road because that's what it looked like. It wasn't perfect, but it was pretty darn good compared to what it's been for a long time. And we're gonna hold him to it. Regarding color, I hear you. And also about the water running down into the lake would be another issue built on top of whatever you guys are dealing with right now that you don't need to have. And so I do understand what you're saying with the apron leading that goes along the roadway right there. Taking sure that that is a stable environment so that things are not running downhill to where you guys are.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we will, Joe and I will talk with them and do our best, very best, to make sure that that is not a continuing issue. Okay? And we will also talk about, I remember hearing that the spray fields would not be seen. So we will talk about that issue also. Anybody have any, anybody else have any other comments? At council comments, we're gonna start with Miss Rachel tonight. Woo-hoo!
All right, well, you might have missed it because I did and I feel so embarrassed that I did miss it, but somebody had a birthday Monday, so I would like to wish Maxine very happy, happy birthday. I love you. Sorry that I'm. Glad and thankful for you. Other than that, I am really proud of us with this military, guys. I'm really happy to see us get certain okaying too because we need it. So that's exciting. Yeah. Thanks. Appreciate you guys' happy summer. Thanks. Go out and get some more tea.
Well, I'm happy about the military because any time you save a nickel, you need to save it. And God knows we're all paying enough nowadays every time we turn around.
Okay. All right. Thankful for the tax. I've been fighting to get those lower for a few years now, so I'm happy. I would have loved to have gone a full mill, but we just couldn't get there. The other thing is, I attended today a disaster preparedness webinar. It's a four-part series and it was quite an eye-opener amongst what just recently went on in taxes, along with me having been asking council and Joe and others about bringing back Code Red to Walnut Grove because that's a very inexpensive, in my opinion, way of notifying people. And in the discussions today where they were talking about in the preparedness, because the first phase is about what you do in advance. One of the key things was how do you notify, how do the citizens know where to look for their notification? And you can't be jumping around and you can't always count on technology in total and all the different things involved. So the two kind of mesh together in my mind. I don't know what Code Red would cost us at this point. I know we had it for 1,500 a year at the time. We had negotiated a good contract. I suspect it's a little higher, but in mind of mind, with 1,500 citizens or however many citizens we have, that's pretty cheap. If we can come out less than a couple of dollars per citizen and get what I feel is a much better program. And part of that program includes using other notifications, not just for weather and just for tire emergencies, but we as council can also use that to put out notices, some of school closing, simple things, and citizens sign it for what areas they want to work. So I certainly want to follow through with that. But I also want to encourage council to sign it for the other three webinars that are happening every Thursday now at 1:30, because there was a lot of enlightening information there about not being able to get funds if you have an emergency, if you haven't done your homework in front. If we're not keeping mileage for our public works people, if we don't have ordinances that involve, when did they become hourly employees in an emergency situation, over-salried employees, and that would include the clerk and others, then we can't get funding reimbursed to us. So I want to still look at all of that.
Where do we sign it for?
It's through GMA, go online. They sent it me, she sent it me there. It came through Sherry initially. Yeah, it's all three. There's three more sessions. It was really good today. In fact, it was the fire chief from social circle that did the main portion.
Thank you, Max.
Super happy about the military. It seems as if the administration is settling down with having to figure out everyday clerical stuff and we're able to move forward accomplishing a lot of cool stuff. I was super excited about that. I'm really looking forward to the plan being complete. Best man talked about since at least 2020. That's when I started getting involved. We have a lot of businesses that are looking forward to coming to our city and I've talked to quite a few. There's talk of a hardware store, a shipping store, a groomer, a dry cleaner, and some professional offices coming in, and a rumor of golf cart sales. So there's a lot to talk and people are excited about starting up new businesses or moving to Walnut Grove and it's exciting.
You got everybody still wants a grocery store, just saying.
Yeah. Somebody just asked me about that again today. Okay. All right. Thank you all. Council comments are good? Yes, okay. Thanks again, Gerald, for everything, and Lynn and Tom for being here. We wish Jay the very best. He's likely to be coming to the city tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness.
So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Give her a second. I'll wait. You can tell them they were. You can have this. Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody.